Good evening and welcome to our April 5, 2016 City Commission Meeting. I do now call it to order and let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let us have our roll call.
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Terry is absent this evening.
Do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Terry tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. And the first thing we have on our agenda tonight is the oath of office for Assistant Fire Chief Lee Adams. You want to come forward, Lee?
If you want some medicine, if you need some stuff. My entire family, family and lots of friends here, I think they're probably all okay where they're at.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lee Adams.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will obey.
That I will obey.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Pickwa.
Of the City of Pickwa.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of.
Assistant Fire Chief.
Assistant Fire Chief.
Of the Pickwa Fire Department.
Of the Pickwa Fire Department.
Congratulations. We do give thanks for our fire department and it's a wonderful way to start our meeting tonight, so wonderful to have our Assistant Fire Chief Lee Adams here with us and his family and everyone else, so thank you so much for all that you all do for our community. And now we'd like to open the floor to announcements, or if there are any announcements for public awareness tonight, you're welcome to come forward and do so.
Jordan Nepper, Main Street, just wanted to invite the Commissioners to Dancing With the Pickwa Stars next Saturday, the 16th. We have two different shows and we'd love to see you there.
Thank you very much. It's always a wonderful, wonderful occasion for our community and I know that it will be again. We do have a few previous dancers sitting up here and in the audience as well, so it's wonderful, wonderful way for our community to enjoy a fun evening and for a very good cause for the Arts Council. Any other announcements this evening? If not, we move to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes.
These are the minutes of the March 15, 2016 Regular Pickwa City Commission Meeting.
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and now we move on to our new business. The first resolution we have tonight is Resolution R-46-16.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement to permit the usage of a portion of Lock Nine Park and Linear Park to Main Street Pickwa and Pickwa Arts Council.
This is an annual lease that we do in order for the Rock Pickwa concerts to be held, and they have been tremendously successful in the past. I know Jordan and Lorna are here, if they'd like to share any information about this year's event, please come and do so.
Good evening, Lorna Swisher, Executive Director of Main Street Pickwa.
Jordan Nepper, Executive Director of Pickwa Arts Council. This year, we're gonna try something a little different again with Rock Pickwa, we like to experiment, so actually, we're going with Commissioner Wilson's suggestion. He told us the first year.
Scary.
He told us the first year that he really liked music, that he could sing along with, so everything this year is themed around cover bands that will play music you're familiar with. So our first concert will be a 50, 60, 70s concert, our second one will be country, and the last one will be 80s to today. Should be a good time, we have, it'll be the third Saturday of June, July, and August.
And we're sure Commissioner Wilson can sing with all these bands.
I do not have any information about his ability to sing.
No, I wouldn't suggest that. But I do have a question for you, though. How many people have you been getting typically for these so far? I know they've been very successful.
The first year, we averaged about 2,500 to 2,800. Last year, we were down a little bit, we went a different direction last year, didn't have the turnout we wanted, so that's why we're gonna try something different this year. So we're anticipating between 2,500 and 3,000.
It's amazing you can get that many people in that space, and it still didn't feel like you were in China or something, you know?
No, our largest concert was the Clark Manson Concert the first year, we had over 3,100 people there and there was plenty of room. Our estimate is we could get about 4,000 people in that space and still have enough room for everybody to move without being shoulder to shoulder or having Chief Jamison yell at me, so.
So in addition to the fabulous music, we will also invite some food trucks to be a part of the event, with a different food truck at each event, and also Susie's Big Dipper, our local food truck will be there at every event, so we're looking forward to that, and then, of course, there'll be pop water and beer and wine available as well for purchase. So we're looking forward to these concerts, the bands are fabulous, and just invite everybody to come out for that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there, is there any comment, public comment from the audience about this resolution? Anything from the Commissioners?
Well, since he brought my name up, I better make a motion to approve Resolution R-46-16.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for Resolution R-46-16. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it passes. We now move on to Resolution Number R-47-16.
A resolution to amend the contract with Strand Associates to move into the bidding phase for a new central zone water tower project.
Assistant Superintendent Bob Jennings will provide the staff report tonight.
Thank you. We've been working with Strand Associates for a period of time now to design our new water tower, it'd be a 1 million gallon tower that'll go in the central zone, and it'll be located down off of Fox Drive. And with us tonight from Strand Associates, we have Mr. Chris Ruggles, and Chris, if you would please, Chris will give you information for tonight's.
Thanks, Bob. Again, Chris Ruggles with Strand Associates, I'm the project manager for the new water storage tank, and there's also a water line that's a significant portion of that project. The new water storage tank, like Bob said, is gonna be a million gallons. We started this process several years ago when the water treatment plant was finalizing design, this was one of the other phases out in the system that needed to happen in order to eliminate the two old tanks that are downtown that have reached their useful life, and in addition to that, they were never really that successful in delivering water, just based on their elevation setting. So the new tank is an improved design that'll set the pressures correctly and be able to deliver both fire flows and potable water flows throughout the city. So having started that process several years ago, we recommended it'd be wise not to go into a contract with us for the bidding and construction at that time, because we weren't sure timing-wise, what funding would come along, and ultimately where the site would be, not knowing the schedule, it was best not to go into contract. So now that it is designed, we'll be going to EPA in the next couple weeks to get their approval. Following that, we will be starting to advertise the project, bid it, and award sometime this summer. Where the project itself is being funded through OEP, through the loan program, and Amy and Don and Bob and Dave were successful in getting an OPWC grant and loan, I believe, and so that's part of the funding as well. Because of the stipulations of that funding, the project can't be awarded until July. So in order to keep us moving forward, such that we can go ahead and advertise, get the EPA approval, and have the project ready to award in July when the money is ready, the contract that the resolution is about today is to, for us to go ahead and administer the contract and the bidding and get the city set up to be able to award as soon as the money is available.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the Commissioners?
Excuse me, I see that we're going to look at both the cement tank and the steel tank.
Yes, sir. The water storage tank for this size, the most cost-effective tanks are, the, what actually holds the water is going to be steel, but what holds that up, that column, can either be steel or concrete. Those two types of towers, either steel or concrete base, are very competitive when it comes to costs, so what we're gonna do is allow the market to determine which type of tank we end up with, whatever's most cost-effective for the city, and it may not necessarily be the cheapest bid, because what we'll do when we get those costs, we have a pre-established life cycle cost analysis we're gonna develop, because the steel column actually has to be painted before the project.
That's what I was getting into. It might be a couple hundred thousand dollars cheaper, but the first paint job's gonna cost you a couple hundred thousand dollars.
That's exactly right, yeah, so we're gonna do a life cycle cost analysis when we get the bids in, to see over the term of 30 years, over the term of your loan, which one's gonna be more cost-effective, when you factor in having to paint the whole thing instead of potentially maybe just the bowl that holds the water.
I'm a proponent for the concrete-based ones, I think they're much, much more reasonable for a city to get into because of the maintenance issue.
Sure, yeah, so when you cycle it out over the course, we'll let the contractors and the market make the determination for us, and we'll come up with a good recommendation.
Will the bottom of this water tank have storage like the one on the east and west end of town?
Yes, it will, so it's gonna be, that column is gonna be approximately the same size, there will be a door on it so we can put some storage of maybe some local equipment or otherwise in there, so it is a usable space for storage purposes, anyway.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything else? Nope.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else from the public about this resolution? If not, I need a motion?
I move to accept Resolution R-47-16.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to Resolution Number R-48-16.
A resolution requesting authorization for the purchase of two valves and the materials needed for the installation of the valves on the 20-inch water main feeding the distribution system from the current water treatment plant.
Mr. Jennings.
Thank you, the next two resolutions actually go together. The first is for materials for this project, our Underground Utilities Department, upon doing some research, has found that we have two valves on that line that are currently inoperable. One of those valves is located down on, at Drexel Avenue, where our two basic transmission lines leading the plant kind of come together, and then the other line, or the other valve is close to the spillway on Route 66, the first spillway you come to just past a cemetery, there's a valve there that also, that doesn't work. Because of that, we're not able to isolate that portion of the feed line that's coming into town, so we found that we do need to put two valves on that line. One of the valves that we're gonna put in is gonna be close to the other valve there by the spillway, and then the other one will actually move up from Drexel and put it closer to where the old trailer park was. In order to do that work, we do have to install a line stop, since we can't isolate the line to do the work, the line stop will be put in, that way we can shut the water down and then be able to go in and do that work and put in the two new valves. So the first resolution is for the materials, we went out for, get the price quotes on that, HD Waterworks Supply was the lowest of the three prices that we got for the valves and the materials that are needed with the valves for the installation.
Any questions, Bob?
Yeah, will the old valves be removed?
No, they will not, they're open, they're just sitting there, we can't close them, so, yeah, they're just there.
But is there a chance that they'll start leaking?
I mean, you have that chance with any valve, but if they're not being used, they're probably not gonna leak, 'cause they're just there, so, most of the time, when a valve leaks is when it's closed all the way open back up, and then it can start leaking, but they're just gonna sit there, so the chance is very slim that they would leak.
Okay.
The chance taken for them leaking is, you know, a lot less than what the cost would be to remove them, that'd be pretty expensive to remove those valves.
Anything else? Anything from the public? And I know we need to take these both separately, but they are related, so, do we then have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-48-16?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and now we, Resolution Number R-49-16.
Mr. Jennings.
A resolution requesting authorization for the installation of a line stop and two valves on the 20-inch water main feeding the distribution system from the current water treatment plant.
This part of the resolution would give us a purchase order with Colley Contracting, that's who we've got to do the work, they'll come in and install the line stop, and then also do the work with assistance from our Underground Utilities Department to install the two valves. They're the only company in this, in the Midwest region that could even do this type of work, they're familiar with our Underground Utilities Department, and they were also used by our off-site pipeline contractor already for a portion of their work, so they're familiar with the area and the job. They'll come in and do the work in one day, they'll come in and we'll have everything excavated, ready to go, they'll have their line stop in place, and then for the next day, they'll just come in, put that line stop in, and we'll have, you know, like I said, both areas where the valves go excavated, and all the work will be done in one day. It will require Johnston Farm to be without water, we've already spoken with Mr. Andy Height and got a timeframe from him that'll work well with them, the 1st of June, they will not be open the day we do the work, we also have, I believe, three service connections on that line that we have to work with to get them water for that day, we're talking about possibly running the jumper line so they can have water on that day, or if not, they just, we may just have to disrupt their service for a small period of time, but we're working with Underground Utilities on that to try and keep everyone in service, so.
Is that the only location affected?
That's the only one, and that, one of the reasons we moved the one valve up was because of that, and the same with the line stop, we picked a location as close as we could where we would disrupt as few as possible, as, you know, people as possible.
They have a spring out there, anyway, so they should be fine, right? Okay.
Anything else from the Commission? Anything from the public on this resolution? If not, do we have a motion to accept Resolution Number R-49-16?
So moved. Second.
Let's have a roll call vote.
Mayor Hines.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Our next resolution, Number R-50-16.
A resolution requesting final legislation to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 185 within the City of Pickwa.
Ms. Haverne will provide the staff report.
Thank you. When Sunset Drive was changed over to State Route 185 a few years ago, we got with the Ohio Department of Transportation and put this project on the pipeline for their urban resurfacing program, and what that program does is it allows ODOT to pay 80% of the project cost, and the city is responsible for the 20%, so we went to commission back in May of 14 to authorize the preliminary agreement with ODOT. We are at the time now where ODOT has designed the project and they're ready to go out to bid, so we need the final legislation for this, and again, this would be the resurfacing of Sunset from Covington Avenue to the West Corporation limit.
Okay. Any questions from the Commission?
Will this be done this summer?
Yes, ODOT put a stipulation in there that they, the contractor cannot start until after July, because Vectren is doing some work on Sunset, so we wanted them to be able to have time to get in and get out before they pave.
What about the school year, will we get it done before the school starts?
We're hoping, but again, it depends on Vectren's schedule, when they're out, we obviously don't want to come in and pave before they're done, we'll do everything we can to avoid the school, and the contractor will want to do the same as well.
Yeah, that'd be a mess if schools up, running with that.
That's our goal, but again, we're kind of at the mercy of Vectren.
Okay.
Does anybody know if Sunset was ever designed to be a state route?
I'm not sure.
I think one part of it was from Park Avenue out.
Going out, but what about from Covington to Park Avenue?
I don't know, I have no idea.
Is that gonna possibly cause us problems?
It's gonna break down.
Well, we have pavement repair, ODOT will be doing pavement repair on this, so any of the areas that are broke down now, they'll be doing pavement repair, and again, if we notice the same issues, you know, with it breaking down, we'll work with ODOT to hopefully get it back in this, this program.
Dave Burner, Utilities Director. When I first came here, I was told that it was supposed to be a loop that would bring 36 around and 75, to be able to loop the city, that was the original.
Okay, thank you.
So the work they were doing on 185 this week was preliminary work for this project, or separated?
That was actually the Underground Utilities Department, they had some water main work that they had to do, and again, all this was coordinated, so they're out of the way prior to when we come through and resurface.
Okay.
I think that was an old section of line that was being replaced that had caused a lot of maintenance problems, so we wanted to get that completed before we come in and pave everything.
Yeah, makes sense.
Anything else from the Commission? Anything from the public? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-50-16?
So moved.
Second.
Let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
And now Resolution Number R-51-16.
A resolution awarding contract to Grissom Construction LLC for the sidewalk ADA compliance program.
Ms. Haverne.
Prior to our resurfacing, we have to go through and make sure all of our intersections are ADA compliant, so we bid this project, we have approximately 41 intersections, the majority of those are on our paving route this year, we also have a couple that are on Sunset that we will be doing prior to ODOT resurfacing, and there are a few other random ones that we've been requested to install, so this will allow all those to go in prior to the resurfacing.
Any questions from the Commission?
And I'm, I'm sure the vendor that was selected has good reviews on prior work, correct?
Actually, Grissom Construction did our program last year, and he's done it multiple years, he's a wonderful contractor, we were actually excited to hear that he got the bid, because he is, he's very conscientious and a local contractor, so it's good.
Okay.
Anything else from the Commission? Anything from the public? If not, can we have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-51-16?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Mark, excuse me, Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye. And now we move to our public comment portion of our meeting. Is there any public comment this evening?
Hi, I'm Jean France, I live in Park Ridge, and since I don't know you, Mayor Hines, I'll give you a little background about myself. I volunteer all over town, I work on flower beds on McCullough Square, I do the canal place, I work at the Echo Hills, Mo Park, Giles Park, and probably many others, I built flower beds on Wayne Street, Nash Street, I'm a volunteer for the farmer's market, Christmas on the Green, I'm a committee member, I'm a founding member of the Southview Neighborhood Organization, former planning commission member, and border zoning appeals, and many others. But I'm coming to you tonight because I am very, very discouraged, very discouraged with the condition of our housing stock in Pickwa. Now, we all know, if you drive around, if you're not driving around, please do it, because there is many, many houses with peeling paint, many houses that have trash on their front porch where there's just barely a path to get through. I'm sure there's derelict cars, because this condition always leads to that. When that was addressed four, five years ago, there was almost 1,000 cars removed. So I want to know, what are you all going to do to correct this? It can't go on like it is, there was a house, two houses from your church, a fine old home, I'd like you to drive by there and look at it, it belonged to one of our old families, and now it's just peeling, paint's falling off of it. So what are we gonna do? Are we gonna continue to let it, leave this city fall down? I can give you names of people that are leaving Pickwa, have left, one moved to Troy, one to Tip, just recently. So are we gonna do anything? Are we gonna get a good inspector? One that's got guts to do something? Or are we just gonna look at this mess, 'cause I'm not moving, you're gonna have to fix it? I love this town, I work hard for it, I put money in it, I don't ever ask them for a dime for the flowers I plant, I paid to sharpen my tools, which I just did today. So what's gonna happen? Anything gonna happen, or is it just gonna continue to fall down?
Well, you ask a very good question, I mean, community pride is a huge thing that we are working on here in the city, and part of it is encouraging your neighbors to do those things, and the other thing is, I know that there are people that financially it can be a problem for, we do have the help program, which is helping some people to take care of, I know that there have been quite a few individuals helped through that, whether it has been with, and painting, I'm not sure, painting outside of a house has been that, but I know that some outside things have been done with houses that did have some issues with some trash and some debris and different things that were cleaned in their yard. We are in the process of hiring an inspector, is that correct?
That's correct, we are in the process of hiring a full-time code coordinator, and that person will be out every day and start to be able to identify those areas that need to be corrected, so that's a change in what we've had from the past few years, but that person will be on board pretty soon.
And who will their supervisor be?
That will be in the Development Department.
That's good, because I have too many people telling me, don't call the Health Department. It's a joke. Name gets lost.
Well, that will be in the Development Department and part of that operation.
Will they have so many other jobs that they can't inspect?
No, that is their job.
Well, I'm looking forward to see how it's been. And I have another question. I've asked so many people this question. I helped to paint five houses when we were doing that project. I don't believe you were here then. But when we finished painting, in one of the old buildings down at the Public Works Department, the first entrance, the old Pickwa lumber, there was a small building on the left. And I used to go in there for Andy Brunner, and that's where the paint was stored with the brushes and the drop cloths and everything. Last I saw, there was a bunch of paint in there, and there also should be $2,500 to $3,000 left in that paint fund. But everybody gives me a blank stir. Now, that was money donated for that, so what has happened to it? Where is it?
Well, that I can't answer.
Where's all that paint?
That I can't answer until we look and see if there was fund or whether it was expended. I will tell you, there's no paint. I absolutely know there's no paint.
So what happened to all that paint?
I have no idea what happened to the paint. There wasn't any paint when I got here, and there's been no paint since I've been here, so I have no idea.
I was there to pick up paint for Andy, and there was a lot of paint because of being the wrong color. There was brushes. There was drop cloth, because every person got $500 and for paint and the every supply they needed. That was where it was run, because I was the one that was sent out to inspect each house and to write down what it needed in case we could get a volunteer group to paint the house for them. If it needed facing board, I wrote it down.
And, and I think that's what now has moved into this help program, because people are going out to do things like that and to volunteer their services that they can, whether it's, we had a retired electrician go and help somebody with some electrical work. Some carpenters help to go to do some of those things. So I think that's, and, and Nikki Reese, who is, who is in our, you know Nikki, she is in charge of this, and she's really trying to get the word out there so people know that there is help available. And we want it to not just be help. We want them to be involved in the process as well, to make sure that they're, they're involved in it. But Jean, I can understand, you put a lot of love and care into the work that you do with the gardens and, and the flowers around town, and it is very evident in places that we go, different times, especially spring for me. I always know that you guys have been out cleaning the beds right, right around behind 311 where the statue is. I mean, you guys do a lovely, lovely job with that. So it, it is frustrating when we as citizens take our time, our energy, and our money to make our community look better, and there's other people who are not doing that. And I-
But you realize, I don't want things. I do it for the appearance.
I understand that.
Because I want it to look good. I. I'm selfish.
No, because you have citizen pride, and that's what we want everybody to have.
And I'm very opinionated, so I'm much better doing it myself.
Well.
There's only one way to do it, and it's Jean's way.
Well, there you go. Well, like I said, we are, we have somebody new coming on to focus on that, and so hopefully we will see some change in the near future. But I do appreciate you bringing this information and bringing this to our attention, because it is, it is necessary. It is something that we need to look at. Because as a community, how, how people see us as they drive in, as they look around, we want it to be a positive experience.
Well, two Mr. Cantrell stopped me Saturday. Both of these have received Resident's Pride Awards, and one lives in the 200 block of South Street and the other on the corner of South Downing and South. So I rolled down the windows to say hello to my former neighbors, and Carl Cantrell said to me, hey, Jean, why don't you bring the mayor down here and see if you can get this neighborhood cleaned up? So I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you.
So please do something.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comment? City managers' report?
Thank you. Just wanted to report that as of April 1st, the gates at the low dam have been raised, which will put the river at summer operating levels again, so it should be, should be rising. Our Development Department and the Southview Neighborhood Association will sponsor a landlord tenant rights workshop on April the 14th at 7:00 PM at the Moat Park Community Center. And if you want more information, you can contact Nikki Reese at our office regarding that. April 14th is also the date of some ribbon cuttings for new businesses in Pickwa. 10 a.m. is F-45 Training at Riverside Place. 10:30 is the Pickwa Daily Call on North Main Street. They have moved to a new location downtown. And at 11 a.m. is the Family Farm and Home Store on East Ash Street, so, and we'll have a lot more ribbon cuttings coming up in the, in the very near future. I just want to mention that we will have a commission work session on April the 14th. And we want to continue to wish Commissioner Terry a speedy recovery, so that's all I have tonight unless you have any questions.
Okay, if not, Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Martin, and I'm looking at Commissioner Wilson, and I knew that as soon as it came out. I was just seeing if you were awake.
I caught that. That was good. I got a question. I helped paint some of the houses before, and I think it was through a program called Renew Pickwa.
Yeah, it was.
Was that it?
Yeah, that was it.
Was Renew Pickwa?
Yeah.
And we ended up painting like 10 houses between the neighborhood associations, Hartzells, and all the other different ones I was involved in. Whatever happened to that program? Did it just, is that what turned into help?
Well, I, I don't, I mean, from my perspective, it, it wasn't operating when I got here, so I really don't have any background as to what happened to it or how it operated. So I would have to defer to someone that, that was here during that time period.
Well, I think, I think it originally started when, I think Lucy got it started when she got some money from some corporate donors to set up an initial fund. And then I think there was other funding later, and then civic groups like Hartzells, I did it with Hartzells also. And I remember it was like, like you were bumping into people trying to paint. There were so many people there. And it was fun. It was fueled by doughnuts and coffee, and it went, went really well. But I think that's how it got started, and I'm not sure why it ended. I think Andy Brunner was kind of running that at the time.
Yeah, he was.
And, but I'm not sure why it stopped or where it is today.
I think now, though, we have the help program, which is the Housing Enhancement League of Pickwa, that I started when I got here to help do those type of functions. And those are, we have the Citizens for a Better Pickwa Committee working with that group now, with that program. Nikki's working with it. So it combines some of the efforts that we've had before, such as the Involve Program, which we started to get volunteers to go out and help those individual homeowners who physically could not do certain things, like shovel their sidewalk or rake leaves or whatever. So we've combined that Involve Program into the Help Program now, so there's many functions that are going on through Help, and I think we're starting to see some very good progress as a result of Nikki's work on that program. And Citizens for a Better Pickwa working with that and getting a lot of volunteers involved at this time.
Is this something that we can look into, maybe getting some grants to help add funding to it?
Well, we're already doing that. As a matter of fact, some of the neighborhood enhancement programs were being worked into that, so that's, that's all, that's why the combination works so well, is getting one program that, the umbrella for those things, that we can utilize various grants and volunteer help and work to help property owners.
Okay.
And I believe they're applying, I, I believe, if I remember correctly, that they did receive some money from Miami County Foundation, the Help Program, and they're, and they're also applying for the Pickwa Community Foundation, so they are looking into grants.
All right. I'd like to wish Commissioner Terry a speedy recovery. And also, all citizens from Pickwa that are watching this, and hopefully you'll tell your friends, it is getting warmer out. There's a lot more people out running around, so be careful when you drive. Some of the little ones don't really pay attention to traffic rules, so you need to pay attention to them, and that's it. Thank you.
And now Commissioner Wilson.
Wow, this is strange. I, I think it might be good. We've got a lot of good programs, Gary, like, you know, Help, Involve, and Adopt. Maybe at every meeting for a while, we could highlight one of those, explain what they do, the contact information, just explain, so people might have a better feel for what they do, if they have a fit for that. I know, I know on the Adopt Program, I know Jean has an, has an area that she does, and I have an area that I do, and it's, it's fun to do it if you do it like once a week, and, and the pressure's on because your name's on it. So if it gets ratty looking, your name's right there, so you have, you've got the pressure of, of going there and keeping it up. So may, maybe every, every meeting, we could highlight one, one of them and maybe reintroduce those to the community.
And if you read my blog this week, you'll see all those on there.
Right.
Right, but a lot of people don't read the blog, so if we could maybe do it at our meetings as well, that would be a good way to reintroduce everything.
Yeah, I would, I would say that Gary's blog this past week was really good about information for citizens that want to get involved, and it is uploaded on, on the, on the city webpage and a variety of other places as well. And I think Pickwa, it's also pushed out through our email system too, so, so, but I think the more we can get that information out there, because I know the Help Program, Nikki, you know, Nikki is trying to get the information out there, and she came and spoke to Rotary today, and she's trying to make her rounds to different places so people know. And, and the neat thing is, there's church groups and other civic organizations that are coming together to work and volunteer their time to help their community and help their citizens in need, so.
And a lot of people think there's much more time, much more of a time commitment than there really is.
Right.
If you do a, a small amount every week, it's very reasonable, and it's not a drain, so just, and it's been a while since we've talked about it, so it might be good.
And sometimes it's just raking some leaves, I mean, something very simple for some people, so, okay.
All right, Commissioner Vogt?
Well, I have to agree with Jean. Some of the houses are looking shabby. However, I've seen some nice-looking houses with pretty good repair that look shabby because their mode of decoration is quilts and blankets for curtains, along with assorted living room furniture on the porch. I know they can put on the windows what they want, but boy, people, it sure looks bad when you use blankets and, and things like that for your windows. I don't know, there isn't any way that we could say you should have some Venetian blinds or something, but then after a while, the Venetian blinds look crappy. So people's going to have to work on this on their own pride to get this done. I don't know if there's anything we can do or offer them to show them how to decorate. It's just a, it's a free country. You can do what you want. Boy, sometimes it really looks bad for us. And it is getting warm out, and I've noticed people are working on the yards and that, and it will start to look better the warmer it gets. I feel sure that people will get out and, and get their lawns in shape, and when they're doing their lawns, I noticed something wrong with their house, and they'll go ahead and fix that too. So I think it, it'll take, it'll take shape here. The wintertime is always, it always looks bad. It's dreary, and it's coming from the bad weather into the nice weather. And just seeing what took place over the winter, and we really can't fix a lot of things in the winter, so it, it'll, it'll get better. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I agree, citizen's pride is so important, and we are working at trying to get all of our citizens prideful about not only their houses, but the community as well. So I appreciate you bringing that information before us this evening. I do want to just make note of a few things that are happening. Tomorrow, State of the Schools is happening at 7:30 a.m. There'll be one at the YWCA, and at 7:30 in the evening at Pickwa Central, there'll be one as well, just to kind of talk about what's going on in the Pickwa City Schools. Also, this is the month of autism awareness. I did do a proclamation for that, which has been uploaded on my blog and on the city website, and we do want to be aware of those that have autism and just awareness of that within our community and world as well. Also, the Run Club that I've been volunteering with at Pickwa Central has a one-mile run tomorrow. They will finally do, at the end of their training, they will do the 5K that the cross-country team is putting on at the high school. But tomorrow, if you see kids running around Nicklin, Ryan King and the Can't Stop Running folks will be there to give them kind of the feel of what a race day looks like. So it's exciting to see these young kids get involved and get moving and get healthy, and hopefully encourage the rest of us to do that as well. Also, speaking of some of our kids in school, I want to give a big shout out to Jack Schmiesing. Many of you have heard. He has been named one of the one of 20 national finalists for the Pro Football Army Scholarship. This award is not only for athletics, but also for academics and community service, and as we know, his dad, Chris Schmiesing, is a city planner here for the city of Pickwa. We are very proud of Jack, and there's going to be a wonderful celebration for him next Tuesday at Pickwa High School. So just another wonderful, wonderful person in our community, making us proud and just showing community pride and living how we all should be living. So if there's not anything else, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, oh, let's have the roll call vote.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Heinz?
Aye. We are adjourned.